Tuesday, June the 3rd, times 6 o'clock. Calling the meeting to order, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Akri.
Here.
Commissioner Downing.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Right here.
Commissioner Tebby.
Here.
Mayor Washington.
Here.
We have our quorum and are duly qualified to conduct business.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't see any presentations on the agenda. We'll go right down to the -- before we go to City Manager's Report, like before the City Commissioners laying on the dais, you have three names of board appointments. Without objections, I'd like to add them to the agenda for next week. Okay, without objections, they're added to the agenda. City Managers' Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just have a few things to share with you tonight. First, it's a reminder that the Latonia Library Branch will be opening on Tuesday, 10:00 a.m. It's the official event out at 3911 Winston. So it's a great thing for the city to have a second library branch serving our folks in Latonia, South Covington, Taylor Mill. Also, within the next week, we're actually going to get the first delivery of our structural steel for City Hall. That's a big step. It should only take a couple of months to get all the steel in place, so we are likely to have a topping out ceremony July or early August, so it's coming right along. On an interesting note, our Economic Development Director, Tom West, has been invited to an OKI panel discussion next Tuesday to talk about art and economic development, along with a national expert on the subject. So as everybody in the city knows, we have a great interest in public art in Covington, and it's part of what makes us who we are, but it is also an economic developmental. So speaking of art, I'm also happy to announce that our Special Projects Director, Elizabeth Wessel, has managed to obtain a donation of several large outdoor sculptures that we're going to incorporate into the CCR. I believe at least one of them is Los Tris Gatos, The Three Cats. We had our second to final walk-through today on the Duvernac House. I know that's of particular interest. There are just a few things left to finish, mostly grading the adjoining property and possibly installing some more wainscoting to protect the northwest wall from runoff and filling an old sidewalk upgrading with concrete. The crew will not be working next week, but they'll return the week after that, so it should be wrapped up just in a matter of two to three weeks. So the last thing I wanted to share was that, if you don't know, we have finally, after a year, maybe a year and a half of waiting, the federal government has approved the Housing Choice voucher merger with the Housing Authority of Covington. So while that's not completed yet, it is approved by the federal government, and it's just a process to get the signatures and check the boxes. And one final thing, on item 19, the ordinance for the fiscal year '25-'26 budget, that will be on your agenda tonight, is on your agenda tonight, but we would like to do the presentation of the budget at the legislative meeting next week.
Okay. Any questions for the manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to -- thank you, Mr. Smith. Move on to the next order of business, items of consideration, Legal Department, Mr. Schultz.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. First item tonight for your consideration is an order authorizing the mayor to execute a licensing fee agreement with the Covington Motor Vehicle Parking Authority.
Is there any question for Mr. Schultz on that? Mr. Schultz, tell me why. Tell the general public why we're doing this, please.
Mayor, the Parking Authority was created for the benefit of the city, and parts of that include, you know, for the city to be able to draw cash out of the Parking Authority. That's one of the benefits, and the Parking Authority has been doing very well, and, you know, this will ensure that the residents of the city in Covington can actually, you know, use some of that money, and it can be used for other purposes other than just parking.
So with these, Ken, feel free to weigh in here. Is the -- is your opinion, is the Parking Authority going to be able to have enough funds to do maintenance and to do the things they need to do?
Yes, that is absolute priority, that we have to maintain our parking facilities, both on-street meters and the garages. I think we're doing better than we've ever done in terms of making the necessary improvements in the day-to-day operation of those facilities. We recently have been working on the elevators at River Center. Those were the original elevators that were put in in the '90s, and they've been band-aided and patched for 40 years, so there is a lot of deferred maintenance out there, but it would not be in our interest to continue to allow those facilities not to be maintained.
Okay, any questions, any follow-ups? Seeing none, any objection to consent? On consent, Mr. Snyder. Kyle?
I've got the second one, Mayor.
You're gonna do the second one, too?
If that's okay with you.
Just, yeah, that's --
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yes, absolutely. My apologies.
No worries, Mayor. An order authorizing -- or for your consideration is an order authorizing the mayor to execute a loaned personnel agreement with the Covington Motor Vehicle Parking Authority for the services of Kyle Snyder.
Any questions? Without objection, consent?
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome. Mr. West.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The first item I will take care of, which is the Small Business Incentive Program, and especially for our commissioner, newer commissioners, this is you all's first year with this. What we do normally each year is to update the guidelines and the requirements of the program based on lessons learned and things that are going on in the world at the time. We try to be as responsive to the needs of small business and the conditions that exist in the community and our nation each year. We do not want to presume that you are going to vote one way or the other as far as including this in the budget. However, we would like to have the rules in place should you make the decision to fund the program again in the next fiscal year, because the first deadline, if the program is renewed, would be at towards the end of July. And so we want to give our business owners, our building owners, as much time as possible to get familiar with any new rules or new eligibility requirements. So having said that, if it's okay with you all, I'll just go through some of the highlights of some of the biggest changes that are being recommended for this next round. Overall, some of the big items are a couple of the subsidies. We're recommending actually raising the caps on those. We have not raised the amount of the incentives since the program began back in 2016, 2017, so it's been nine years, and those amounts have stayed the same. There's a recommendation to remove the bonus points. That was for women, veterans, minority, LGBTQ, and first responders. So removing that, those bonus points from all of three of the programs. There are a lot of details that we looked at for clarification, both for those people who are scoring the applications, as well as for the business and property owners, to clarify, for example, what an FTE actually means in this context. And then we want to make sure that everything that we're doing and bringing to you all aligns with our economic development strategy, so it matches up with our target sectors and our other goals that are in our economic development strategy. So I'll just go through the three. These are not necessarily in the order that they were in the packet, but this is the order where they would fit on one or two slides. The facade incentive, we're recommending that that cap be increased from $6,000 to $10,000, and I'll remind you that this is a match, so it requires a minimum of one-to-one match, so they would have to invest at least an additional $10,000 to -- in order to receive that higher amount. Again, construction costs have escalated, construction labor has escalated certainly in the last nine years. We also looked at adding to the scoring an existing condition assessment. We've been getting applications in from some where we look at it and we say, okay, what's really wrong with this facade? Because the original intent of the program was to get buildings that there's no way anybody would ever want to lease, to get those into a condition where they would be leasable. So we're looking at existing condition of the facade being added. And then the last thing is, the last big thing, is to make the Certificate of Appropriateness a requirement for all the facades, regardless of whether they're in a design review area or not, they would be required to get a Certificate of Appropriateness. If we're gonna put tax dollars towards something, and especially if it's a historic building, we want to make sure that any alterations would be appropriate even if it were in a design area. On the Historic Electric Sign Program, again, an increase in that cap from $7,500 to $10,000. These are extremely expensive projects to undertake. They add quite a bit to the vibrancy of our streets, especially at night. Right now, it's a 25% match that's required, so if you wanted to qualify for the $7,500, the program is now, the building owner would have to put at least $2,500 in. We're looking at reducing that match to 20%, so it would be an 80/20 instead of 75/25. We think this will make it a little bit more enticing, and some of those electric signs that are kind of endangered in our community might be more appealing to get those brought up to restoration standards. And then finally, on the rent incentive, there's some clarity in there on the monitoring period, again, the FTE definition, what constitutes an effective business plan, so we're providing more clarity to the applicants on that. Operators of incubators, accelerators, co-working spaces themselves, the operator themselves are not eligible for the rent incentive. However, we are recommending that the tenants of those incubators, accelerators, and co-working spaces would be exempted from our less than 120-day requirement if they move out of that facility and into a permanent bricks-and-mortar location. So in other words, you're not eligible for this program if you move to Covington and you don't apply for it until four months later. However, what we're saying is if you do your startup here, you incubate or accelerate here, we're not gonna count that time against you. If you are here in one of those places and you decide to move to a more permanent location, we would exempt you from that eligibility requirement. Again, alignment with the economic development strategy, and we removed the visibility category. That was part of the scoring criteria. I think early on, a lot of this program was trying to get more retail, restaurant, more street-level activity going on, so there was how visible is the new business going to be. We really want office. We'd like to have a lot more office users, so that's one of the reasons why we removed that visibility category from the scoring. In your packet are also revised versions of the applications for all three of those, should you all decide to approve the recommendations for the eligibility requirements and the guidelines. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. West? Commissioner Tebby?
I just have a comment, just as you mentioned it. As a newly-elected commissioner, the overview of all the changes was extremely helpful, and thank you for that.
I have to thank my staff for that, so they're really good at that. Any other questions? Commissioner Smith?
Just out of curiosity, I know that we removed bonus points for our first responders, veteran, LGBTQ, those sorts of things. What was the catalyst behind that change?
I think there was concern with the national movement with DEI programs that we might jeopardize some of our federal funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Downing?
The indication from the -- sorry, that question was the same question I was gonna ask. I had a follow-up unrelated, though. With regard to the 20% and 25% match for the electric signs, do we -- have we had people tell us that that extra $500 is the make or break? Like, I'm trying to, like, I'm thinking about the electric signs. I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I'm thinking about this from a, okay, we're increasing the caps in several areas, so the money's not going to go as far, because we're going to be able to only help fewer -- we're gonna be able to help fewer people ultimately. So, like, did we, was that feedback from other businesses that said, hey, like, if you lower this down to 20%, I'd be willing to apply for the grant and make that change? Or was that something that kind of we felt?
I think it was based on us working with the folks who were working on these projects. We've only had a few of those projects. One of the things that I believe that has happened actually is that the building owners are matching even more than that when it comes to having them installed, having the electrical updated, and things like that. So for the sign restoration itself, if you look just at that, you're seeing more investment on the part of the property owner that's not directly related to the sign, or the sign restoration. That probably didn't make sense, because I rambled through it, but --
I plan on following up with you.
Any other questions for Tom? Regular. Is that okay?
Regular.
Thank you, Mr. West.
So we'll be on for next week?
Yes, it'll be, but it'll be regular.
Thank you.
Not consent. Mr. Sodowsky?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So first item is an order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with McD Concrete Enterprises LLC for the construction of electric and tobacco alleys at Fourth and Scott Streets. So we did a first phase of this several years ago through an RFP solicitation where basically that block that you see, the areas that are not highlighted, is what has been completed so far. So what this project is gonna do is complete the unfinished portions of the electric and tobacco alley over there on Fourth and Scott. There is a current photo there where you can see the cracked asphalt and missing pavers and just things off-grade, just looks like a mess, and then what the renovation's gonna look like. So it's gonna result in basically lining up nicely with the new, with the most recent renovations, where you have the colored concrete, or the colored paver going down the middle with the concrete on each side. The bid price that we received for this, so we did a RFP process, and we worked with Department of Public Works to put that together, so we had their guidance, but the bid price we received was $139,440 from McD Concrete. SITO recommended this project for TIF funding, so we received unanimous support on April the 3rd, and we are looking forward to helping to support a lot of the new investment that you're seeing over there in that corridor with Wenzel Distillery and the speculative office project over on the 400 block of Scott, as well as the repair shop. This will be utilized by those customers and the PNC branch, so we feel like it's a really good infrastructure project in our TIF district. So any questions on that, construction agreement?
Any questions for Mr.? Without objection, consent. Thank you, sir. Next item?
Yeah, the next item is an order authorizing the mayor to execute a First Amendment to the disposition development agreement with Covington Point Joint Venture for the development of Block A. So this is the Jody Funky Group Real Estate, or Jody Funky Real Estate Group project. That's the 10 single-family homes and the two-corner mixed-use buildings on Block A. This amendment was, so the developer approached us wanting to change some of the terms slightly of the agreement, so I'll walk through those with you. One thing to keep in mind is the purchase price remains the same, but what this does is it changes the first installment price from $720,000 to $480,000 at closing, and then the second installment would be from $720,000 to $960,000 upon completion of Phase 1. Now, in exchange for that, Jody is committing to completing three homes instead of two, in addition to the mixed-use building, and the delivery date for the completion of the Phase 2 project, which is going to be the remainder of the block, so the seven single-family homes and the remaining corner-mixed-use building, is gonna be fast-tracked from 72 months after the date of the agreement to 48 months. Any questions?
Commissioner Downing?
Why? It's a great question. So I think the, so it's a business, it's, you know, it's her own, I think the way that the financing is lining up for her, this is gonna help her right now. I think it's gonna help bring in the equity quicker into the deal. Plus, she's using some proceeds from her other developments to help fund this project. So a lot of it is concerned with timing on when she's gonna get those proceeds. Second, the original, the way we framed this up originally was going to be pay half, you know, at closing and then half after you complete Phase 1. This is more of kind of like a pro-rate, so think of it as she's purchasing four lots. The $480 is basically the prorated value of the four lots that she's purchasing. So I think the original intent, though, was kind of what I mentioned at first.
Commissioner Downing?
Phase 1, Phase 2, and then, I should have researched this prior to this question, but can you remind me, is Phase 2 contingent upon anything from Phase 1, or is Phase 2 based on solely time? I.e., is there anything about the sale of properties or the cost that she's going to be able to recoup from these, or is this such that in Phase 2, at 48 months, this is going to start regardless of whether or not anything else is happening?
Yeah, no, it's really just comes down to timing of it. You know, with her being able to, I mean, she has a lot of strong interest in these single-family homes right now, so she's actually predicting that she'll be able to start on Phase 2 pretty early and will meet this deadline, probably crush this deadline. But, yeah, it really comes down to the timing, and in the agreement, we do reserve a repurchase option. So, you know, if, for whatever reason, the developer, you know, lapses or defaults or can't complete Phase 2, we reserve the right to repurchase the remaining lots.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Without objection, consent? Consent. Next item? Madam Clerk, regular.
All right. Lastly, an order authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents to grant a temporary access and construction easement to the Drees Company in relation to the Block B project at CCR. So what this construction easement does is allows the developer, well, actually, let me take a step back and provide a little more background. So as part of the city's obligation, we provided a GeoTech Soil Assessment Report, and then they, their GeoTech engineer, then they went ahead and commissioned a GeoTech Recommendation Report. So what that report does is it actually recommends, like, what type of structure you can build on the soil. So it's kind of like the next phase of their pre-development work as it pertains to soil conditions. And so they were advised to use this process called RAM-aggregated peers, which essentially is a fancy way of saying they're gonna punch some more stone into the ground and strengthen the soil conditions to be more favorable for their particular development. The development's big, it's gonna be on pads, it's three stories tall, so they wanna be extra careful about the structural integrity, and so they're going to go ahead and do this investment prior to closing to make sure that the soil is in the best condition possible. And then it also allows them to construct stormwater stubouts. The way that they're taking down these four lots is, you know, they're gonna close on the first lot, do the construction, and then the storm sewer, they're gonna stub it out, but it's going to go into the next lot at a time that they may not actually have title to that lot. So that's, this construction easement will allow them to do that, it'll be legal, and everyone will be happy. Any questions?
Commissioner Smith?
Just briefly, and sometimes, you know, we just don't know what we don't know. Is there any reason that we wouldn't grant this?
No.
Okay. That's it?
Yeah.
Very simple. Thank you.
Mr. Akri?
Yeah, I'm just, because I do construction for a living, putting, changing the soil could affect other properties around it, so I'm curious if there are agreements adjacent to that. How, I guess, how big is the easement, first of all, and then?
Yeah, so the easement's gonna be for the entire Block B site. We currently do not have any agreements, I mean, we have Block A that's on the other side of Russell, and then we have the mixed-use Silverman project that's on the other side of Washington, nothing adjacent to the north.
Commissioner, if I could jump in, I would say that there is an alley behind that block, so it is not contiguous by dirt to any other parcel.
Sure.
Commissioner Downing?
To Commissioner Akri's point, given the nature of the ask, is there anything that we need to be paying attention to regarding timing for when they do this relative to some of the other developments that's going to be happening, that it will be happening all of a sudden?
So their timing for this is going to be late July, early August. We don't believe that it's going to affect staging for any of the other projects or their construction.
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Commissioner Akri.
We were hoping that they were gonna be the first ones to break ground down there. This doesn't look like the case now.
No, it doesn't, but I think they're just trying to take every possible precaution, you know, to reduce their risk, and I think that's just kind of the nature of their company and their business model.
Have they indicated to us when they're planning on breaking ground after this is done, or?
After this is done, I mean, there will be no other city obligation. We've fulfilled everything, so it's really, once they issue to us a notice of suitability, it's kind of the trigger for closing, and we should be able to get that as soon as this is done.
Right. The good news, Mayor, if I could jump in again, is that while they're not doing vertical, like groundbreaking vertically, they are kind of actually breaking ground into the ground. So they're investing money into this property. This will allow them to invest money into the property before they actually close on it. It just won't be very visible going up. It's really work going down.
Okay. Thank you. It was a pleasure. Any objection? Consent?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sodowsky. Human Resources, Director Lewis.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I have four items for your consideration this evening. The first is an order approving the new hire of Garav Salvi. He will be a tax auditor in the Finance Department, and this would be effective June 11th.
Any questions? Seeing none? No objection to consent? Consent.
Next is an order accepting the resignation of Brad Tanner in the Fire Department. He was a firefighter with us, and this would be effective June 12th.
Consent?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadowski. Human Resources Director Lewis.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I have four items for your consideration this evening. The first is an order approving the new hire of Gaurav Salvi. He will be a tax auditor in the Finance Department, and this would be effective June 11th.
Any questions? Seeing none? No objection to consent? Consent.
Next is an order accepting the resignation of Brad Tanner in the Fire Department. He was a firefighter with us, and this would be effective June 12th.
Any questions? No objections? Seeing none? Consent.
Next is an order approving the new hire of Chad Haggard, and he will be a municipal ground worker in the Urban Forestry Division, Public Works, and this will be effective June 11th.
Any questions? No questions? Seeing none? Consent.
And finally, an order approving the hire of Jiv Johnson. He will be our new controller in the Finance Department effective June 11th.
No questions? Seeing no? Questions? Consent?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I have one item for consideration this evening. I've been a long time in the making. Devoo Park, we have three shelters right now, and we're looking to put a fourth one in. So this is a request for an order allowing the mayor to execute a contract with Radius Construction for installation of a new shelter located adjacent to President's Lake in Devoo Park. As you may recall, DEPAC came back with a second recommendation this year, changing their funding allocations, essentially requesting more money from DPI to go towards this. So happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Akri? Just confirming, this is the shelter as well as utilities, or just the shelter?
Should be everything we need to get it going. I mean, there's the bathroom. Yeah.
Right. Any other questions? Any objection? No objection? Consent?
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes? Director Bales?
Good evening. Tonight's agenda item is a request for renewal of our annual memorandum of agreement with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. This is for the amount of $65,000 for maintenance, pothole filling, asphalt patching, and salt distribution that we do on state routes within the city.
Any questions? No question? Seeing none? Consent? Thank you, Mr. Bales. Chief Dai? Hmm? No. No. It's not. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I have before you five promotions. This is a trickle-down effect from recent retirements. The first one is an order to accept the promotion of Battalion Chief Patrick Everbeck to Deputy Chief.
Any questions? Seeing none? Without objection? Consent?
The second one is Captain Amy Schaefer to Battalion Chief. They're all effective June 8th.
Any questions? No questions? Without objection? Consent?
The third would be Lieutenant Mike Davis to Captain.
Any questions? Seeing none? Without objection? Consent?
Engineer Phil Krollman to Lieutenant.
Any questions? No questions? Without objection? Consent?
And the last is firefighter Chase Autry to Engineer.
Any questions? Seeing none? Consent? Chief? I assume we're going to have a big party next week.
That was going to be my next. They all will be celebratory, so yes.
All right. So, Madam Clerk, we're going to, I believe, we're going to have two presentations, and we can put that one as the first and make sure. I believe you've finished, Chief?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Police Department Colonel Valente?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you, you've got an order requesting and approving and adopting the Covington Police Department policy changes since May of last year. If you'd like, I can go through them. If not, they were all provided to you in the packet.
Chief, I just have one question, and talk to me about the home fleet change.
Yep. So there was a change that was made, that was actually the most recent change that was made. We have four different tiers of home fleet. Tier one are folks who live in the city of Covington. Tier two are those who live in Kenton County. Tier three are those who live in Campbell and Boone County. And then tier four is anybody else. The long and the short of it is, is that that section in tier four was changed to allow us to retain and recruit some folks. It allows, it allows them to take their cars home. There are times when, I won't say it's a necessity, but it's definitely an advantage to have them take their cars home, not only the advantage to them, but also an advantage to the department. But that's, but that was the reason for the changes, is to help with retention. I can tell you that after I made that change, I did have at least one person come to me that was looking to move to an agency in Ohio and said, well, thank you very much, I'm going to stay here. So at least for that guy, it made a difference. But that, but that was the reason for the change.
Safe to say, we're still in a highly competitive market when it comes to law enforcement.
There are no words to describe the level of competition that's out there. Everybody is basically trying to find the best candidates. I think if you look a few agendas ago, we lost a couple candidates, the potential candidates of the city of Cincinnati, and that's just a reality that we're going to have to deal with. You know, it is, it is very competitive out there. When we do find quality people, we need to bring them on and get them here because we still do a very good, a very good, we are still very good here about vetting our folks that we have here. There's a lot of folks that don't, that get turned down and we don't offer jobs to. So, you know, when we find those good candidates, we need to do everything that we possibly can to retain them.
Okay. Any questions for the chief? Seeing none? What's the pleasure? Consent or regular?
Consent.
Consent. Consent, thank you.
Thank you.
And as mentioned before, on item 19, the Finance Director will be presenting to the City Commission after the celebratory orders of next week with our firefighters. Also, moving to the second reading of the ordinance, next week we'll have a second reading of the Neighborhood Development Code, Chapter 158. We encourage our residents at home, if you'd like to weigh in, please contact the Board of Commissioners. You can find us, the best way to find us is through email. You can email all of us with one click and let us know your thoughts on the ordinance. Moving on to the next item is commission discussion. Any Commissioner have any discussion points? Seeing none? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Akri?
I just want to thank everybody, excuse me, that was involved this weekend, weekend in the Pride Festival. Lots of city folks were there as well as everybody sitting up here at the dais, so I appreciate the city of Covington continuing to push that forward and supporting. That's all.
Any other comments? No comments? I have no comments? We're adjourned.